If I can have everybody's attention, we're going to get started here in about one minute. If I can have your attention, we'll call this meeting to order. The clock says a little before, but our city clerk says it's straight up and down five o'clock.
That's right.
So my goal is, and hopefully we can get out of here before 5:45, some of us have other appointments we have to go to. So I really intended, well, we need to call Ross. Go ahead, Ms. Whitby.
Ross, here.
White.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Robinson.
Here.
Baxter.
Here.
Vouch.
Here.
Hyde is not here. And Witcher?
Present.
Corum is present, sir.
Thank you very much. I intended this to be a little bit more informal, but because we're going to have to use the TV to get to a lot of our homes, we decided that it's best to go ahead and do it on PowerPoint. And if, when we start asking questions or comments, if it's not from the council, because of that reason, I need for you to come up to the microphone so, or if you want to shout it, I'll repeat the question and give it the answer so that the people at home can see what we're talking about. So I'm going to casually stroll through our PowerPoint. As y'all, everyone knows, we've been working on the downtown development and redevelopment for a number of years. And the idea of having a downtown square or a plaza has been on the agenda forever. But the development around where the plaza is going to be really had to take place first. And we've looked at a lot of opportunities and a lot of developers over the years, and we never quite got close enough for me to think that it's time to pull the trigger on looking at exactly what we want in a square and how much it's going to cost. So in order to do the cost, we have to design it first. So in the past six months, a lot of our development plans and ideas have, are coming to fruition. And as you can see on the screen right now, the property that we're talking about is the old Union Rescue Mission and the old Feed Mill property, as far as the development behind the plaza. And then the Main Street Plaza area is right to the north of the Heritage Center as you, as you're looking at it. So kind of give everybody an idea of where we are at home. This is the property we're talking about. So the, I'm on the development number one. That's the southern half of that property. There is a contract signed on that property from the developer. It's a regional developer that's done these developments before. They've got a lot of experience, multi-years experience, and they have the financial wherewithal to do it. So we feel very confident if we can get the railroad spur property cleared up and the easements cleared up, that that is a real deal. The development number two, as we've worked three or four months ago with Lawrence Finn and Bob Harden. Lawrence, of course, brings his experience in the success in Hendricks Village and Conway. And that is what I envisioned behind the trolley barn, that we've got enough apartments. And if we, the southern half, if we do multifamily, I really didn't want this to be apartments. And neither did Lawrence and Bob, and they had the same vision that I think all of us have. So the northern part of that property is going to be multifamily. Now, and we have reached an agreement with Lawrence and Bob on concept. We're still tweaking some of the cost a little bit to see exactly how much money that we're going to have to pay, they're going to have to pay for the property in order to make this single-family portion work. But some of the pictures, the one before, go back one there, that one right there, is something similar to Hendricks Village in Conway, and they envisioned doing some, something very similar there. It's going to be 68 single-family residents there, and the apartment complex on the southern part is going to be, I think, 150. Danny, is that about right? 150 units. And then, let's go back to the overall, around the square itself, right there. See with the square and plaza? The two blue drawings there, the one on the, on the east side is a three, I'd love for it to be a four-story building that will, we'd like, love for it to be retail on the bottom, maybe a restaurant, if not something else. We've, we feel very confident that we've got two partners at least, and if it's a three-story, we've got two-thirds of it probably condoed out. So we're real confident now that, that that development's going to happen. And then the building area on the north of the square is, we have two options there, and I'm going to show you some pictures from, from Fort Worth. Originally, and my number one would be for that to be a restaurant with outdoor dining facing the plaza. If we don't do that, then as they did in Sundance, they put a municipal building there that is, is for events, rentals, weddings, receptions. That is, is really, really a pretty building, and it adds to the ambiance and the use of the square. So we're going to show you some pictures of that, too. And this square is approximately about 180 to 200 feet wide and about the same deep. So the, what we're going to be looking at in pictures of Sundance Square is going to be smaller, of course. This will be a mini Sundance Square, if you will. But, you know, I've, I've been trying to figure out exactly where I thought we wanted to go. And in, in my travels in the past year or so, I've visited four different squares. This one, of course, in Fort Worth. I went to Kansas City and looked at their power and light district. I went to Knoxville last year when we were in Nashville, Missy and I drove over to Knoxville and looked at their square. And then when I was in New York a couple of months ago, architect out there took me to Bryant Park. And so I brought back pictures of all these parks, and before I brought it to you, I sat down with a committee of about 10, mostly staff, and said, "Let's go through all these, and what do you see down there?" And to the man and woman that were there, we all decided that Sundance Square was probably what we could see working there, because we've got a pretty good idea of what, what we will be using that property for, and we think this would work. So what we've done is taken some of our best pictures of when we were down there last year, along with some off of the internet, to show you what Sundance Square looks like and why we are excited about it. As you can see, it's got a water feature there on it. The unique thing about this water feature is that it's almost flat, and it drains very quickly. And so you can turn the water off, and in 10 minutes, you have, you can walk on it, set up tables and chairs, or umbrellas, or whatever it might be. But it's also very beautiful to stand around, or sit around, or enjoy. The, see the mural up on the building? I see that mural being on the side of the history building. And, and then there's another building that you can't see on your left, is be where, about where our three-story, four-story building would be. This gives you an idea of the size of this. It's, it's good, probably three times, maybe four times as big as what we have. The, the building on the, on the upper right with the, all the, that's on the ground level, that's the municipal building, and then, of course, those are those very expensive umbrellas that they have there that we would never be able to afford. So let's go to the next slide. Just more of the same. It's really, really pretty, and they allow people to walk through it. You can't go in your bathing suits and things like that, but if you've got a four-year-old that wants to go out there in their shorts, they certainly can. They, they do turn it off, or don't allow children there to play in the, in the water feature after about four o'clock. But we can make our own rules on however we want to do that, depending on what day it is or what it might be. So, next slide. It's a video here. Just watch this just for a minute, just as many things they can do with that. Notice the lights on the buildings and the light on the canopies change at, at the same time. And we could definitely do something very similar to that with our heritage building and the new office building there, that, that those colors could change along with the fountain. I believe they also have music that can go with some of this. But I can, I can see that view from, from Main Street. This shows you exactly what I was telling you earlier. As soon as the, the water is shut off, every one of those spigots has a drain, and the water disappears quickly, and it can be used for any and others things, just like that. The municipal building is on the left, the green, with the green domed roof. There it is. Also with, with a patio out beside it, and then a fountain that, that trickles down. I don't think we could afford that either, but there it is at night. It's all glass, and all those doors open up if it was a spring day or fall, as you can see right there, being used as a reception area. It's not, it doesn't have a kitchen in it, but it's got catering setup areas and things like that, restrooms, of course. And it's, it's right there next to a restaurant and on the square. This is, you know, and I, I'm not going to own the building, or the city's not going to own the building, they might own part of it, but this is really the architecture that I found in Knoxville. That was on the square in Knoxville. And I see our building, and I'm going to request that of the owners, unless y'all don't like it, but I think that would fit into our downtown really well, and I really like that architecture. So I wanted to throw that picture up there as we're dreaming and, and being right-brained tonight. Okay? Is that it? Okay, so what's my goal? My goal is, I saw the success that we had when we took a trip to Boston to see the innovation hub that they had in Boston and their success. Private citizens went, we had some staff people go, and they went up there and they brought back some great ideas, and they also brought back the excitement that was necessary to put a project like that together. Well, this is no different. This, this plaza is an economic development tool, maybe one of the biggest economic development tools that we've ever done. And we've got to have that same excitement, we've got to have that same partnership with the public and the developers that want to develop around it. So, okay, it worked once, and why can't it work again? We've been very frugal with our travel this year, and so I think that it would behoove us to again, take a trip. Fort Worth is a lot closer than Boston, and a lot less expensive, too, and go down to there. The CEO of Sundance Square has invited us to come down, and he will show us everything about Sundance Square. And one of my questions is going to be, you know, what would you do different? And so that we don't make the same mistakes that they've made. And, and he is, will be willing to spend time with us, they're going to, we're making sure that the fountain and the lights are going to be working that night when we're there. He'll answer all of our questions, he'll spend the day with us. And then my plans are for us to group up before dinner on Monday night and go over everything that we saw, and we'll have some of our staff there that will help us moderate it and take our ideas down so that we can bring them back while they're all fresh on our mind. So, in a nutshell, we only have one chance to do this, we've only got one chance to do it right. And we've all got to be on the same page, all of us sitting around up here, and all of you at home, and all of you that are in the council chambers tonight. So I encourage you, if any of you have any questions of me, or of the council, or if the council's got any questions, I'll, I'll try to address them, what we'd like for you to do, and, and we've passed out to some of you. But we did some ballpark pricing for those of you that, that would be required to pay your own way. But Bob, Mayor, from our CVB, got us a really good deal on a hotel, which is a block away from the square, and it's $149 a night. We're only going to be there one night, plus taxes. Airfare is $240. And ground transportation, we're not sure. We might end up just, everybody taking a cab. We hadn't made that, our minds up. But, so we're looking at about $400, $500 apiece is what it's going to cost. And so I really, really want to encourage our, our private citizens to, to go with us, because we really want to know what you want, and we want your opinion. We didn't, none of us are experienced developers or architects, so we really need all of us to try to decide together, is this really what we want? And then we can get it halfway designed, at least long enough, far enough to, to price it, and then we can see if we're going to be able to find the money. I've got, just FYI, we've, we've been able to save close to a million dollars in our special projects account, and we're getting ready to spend about $200,000 of that. So we're going to have about $700,000, maybe a little bit more, in that account to go towards this. I have no idea what it's going to cost. It could be three times that much. But we've got some other properties that we've got a good chance of selling. So a lot of things are going to need to fall into line, but I think they've got a really good chance to do that. So with that, has anybody got thoughts, comments, council, on where we are, and what the thoughts are? Mr. Witcher?
Mayor, could you kind of enlighten us about the proposed itinerary? I notice, you know, you've got several flight times leaving Little Rock.
Well, honestly, those decisions haven't been made yet. The, we're still working with the CEO on exactly what time he wants us there. If he doesn't want us there until two, then we might be able to try to take that, that later flight, so we don't have to get up and take, catch that six o'clock flight. So that's still in the works, but we hope to have that information by Monday, and so we'll be able to tell everybody by Monday. But worst-case scenario is that we'd have to leave at that 6:10 flight. Worst case, or best case, it would be the, maybe the 10 o'clock flight.
I like traveling early.
I like traveling late, so.
I knew that, I knew that. All right, how about, how about returning? Do you have any?
I would guess we would spend the night, get up the next morning, have breakfast, and get home. I'm, I'm planning on getting back to work by noon on Tuesday. And all of our staff, by the way, they're going, y'all need to be home and work at noon, too.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Ross.
We're still looking at possible naming rights for the plaza as far as funding, too.
Yes.
That's, that's huge, if we could find a angel investor, or whatever.
Right. We, we have already drawn up a letter, it's in draft form right now, and Nathan and I are tweaking it, on the letter that's going to go out to various and sundry benefactors that, that we might encourage to be a part of that. I'm going to make some personal phone calls, myself, to some people that I think might be interested in being a part of this, not only because it's, it's really a good public project, and maybe even for not for naming rights, but would I sell my soul? If it was Bad Boy Mowers, you know, would we call it Bad Boy Square? Maybe not, but we would certainly entertain that. You know, I think the mural itself could be designed, you know, like if it was a, a big finance company, you know, it could, you know, and we're, we're a pretty good financial center here in Little Rock and North Little Rock. It could lean in that direction, or if it was UP, it could lean in the direction of the railroad, or, you know, so. And then another thing that they did in Kansas City, and they, we, we didn't show the screen tonight, but they've got a portable TV, if you will. It's about as big as a side of a barn, but they, they move it in and out on trailer. And in Kansas City, they have a screen on the side of the building, and they show Kansas State football games, and Kansas basketball games, and Kansas Chief football games, and they show advertisements on that. And so, you know, that's another way that we could, you know, if, if somebody wanted to be the ultimate sponsor, you know, the ability to run their commercials, or their logos, or whatever else they might want. So yes, they would get a marketing bang out of their buck if they chose to, to be a part of this.
Or if there's a Bass family out there.
Yeah, we would, we would love it if the, you know, we, I might call the Bass family and see if they want to do Sundance Square North Little Rock version.
North, yeah.
Yeah. Bill Halter does, told me the other day that he, he was on a board with one of the Mr. Bass, and he said that he would certainly call him, so I'm going to take Bill up on that offer to make that, make that call for us. But this is going to be special, and I don't want to make any mistakes, so. Yes, ma'am.
So would the plaza, would it be maintained by the city? You know, the Sundance Plaza, they have their own, I mean, they handle all the security, everything there, it's not city-maintained, so.
Good question. What, this is what I envisioned. Now, you know, it might change, but we're looking very seriously at advertising and promotion, CVB, our Convention and Visitors Bureau, attempting, or looking at adding that third penny on the hotel tax. This square is going to be a, a big attraction. People are going to come in and spend the night, spend the weekends, just to, to come to festivals here and, and enjoy the, our entertainment district downtown. So with that, we believe that we've, we've always wanted to move CBB down here, to downtown, and so we're thinking we can afford it with this penny, that they can be a partner in the three-story building, and also manage the square for us at the same time. So that's where we are right now in the planning process. Question?
And when you were talking about, you know, possibly on the right side of the building, possibly a restaurant or something, there's room for multiple shops there, correct? I mean, we could have small, several, couple of small restaurants or a shop, or?
Could be, could be. I mean, my, my first vision years ago, and we had, we had Ed David talked into it, was to put something similar to the Faded Rose, you know, which is about, you know, 30-foot wide and long and skinny, you know? And David chose to keep the Faded Rose where, where it was. So could you put three smaller restaurants in there? Sure. Yeah, I mean, you'll see, as you saw when we were down there, on the one side of Sundance Square, there were two restaurants there that lined that one side. So I think that would be a beautiful place for a restaurant, to be able to sit out there on a patio. Most of it would be in the shade, probably at, in the evenings, and those fountains going, and those lights, and, and to be able to sit outside and have dinner, I just think that'd be perfect. And, and those of you that go with us, we're, we're planning on having dinner at the restaurant that sits on the side of the square, so you can enjoy, enjoy that and get the feel of, of what it would be like. So we're looking forward to that, too. Any comments from the, from the audience? Julie, where's Julie? All right, everybody sees Julie. Julie has a sign-up sheet for those that want to go with us. As soon as we're going to, I think the deadline we said is noon on Monday? Is that what we said, Nathan? Noon Monday? Let us know if you're going to go with us, so we can start reserving hotel rooms and such, and making plans for everyone. If you've got any questions that you want to ask me privately, feel free to call me and, and let me know. And I don't know that I can think of anything else. Am I forgetting anything, guys and girls? Okay. Yeah, go ahead, Bruce.
The, I guess, that's the north side, that's one restaurant, is what you envisaged that to be, and then the building apartment complex?
Well, that's, it's.
Or is there potential for?
That is about 180 feet. So you could literally get two in there, you know? And, or you could do a, a private venue on one end of it, just like the building we saw, and do a, a restaurant on the other end of it, and let the restaurant manage, manage the catering and all that for the, the rental area. You know, which kind of makes sense, too, especially if you've got an experienced restaurateur, he would, he would use that public facility that we paid to build for his customers, you know, to use if they wanted a private dining area, whatever.
Just for the expansion?
Yeah, yeah.
But where's the parking?
Well, all right, you see the area on the east side of where that three-story building's going to go? That'll all be parking. Go back to that, the drawings that Lawrence brought in, yeah, right there. All right, you see where it says development number two? Right. All right, that's parking right there. Then there's parking over, behind the trolley barn, that we're negotiating right now with Lawrence. And, you know, some of those will be private for the property owners, the rest of it will be public parking. And then the, on the front of the trolley barn, all that parking right there, we feel like Rock Region Metro will allow us to use that as public parking. And then over in front of the police substation and the EOC, we've moved that fence, if none of you have been by there, we've moved that fence back. So we opened up that entire parking lot for a public parking, which is going to serve that seventh, 700 block, you know, where Allen News Building's going to be, and where John Chandler's doing all those buildings there. So we got a lot of exciting things happening at 700 block, too, that we can't talk about right now, but there'll be some pretty cool stuff going in there, and I'd say 90% chance that's going to happen, too.
I guess, when you mentioned parking, the one that I go back to, there's 150-unit apartment, as far, where the parking, I mean, they'll have their, I mean, they'll be required to have parking for 150 units, correct?
Yeah, there's your parking, right there, behind that unit.
Okay.
You know, that's a C6, so you don't have to have the same number of parking spots as you would, I don't know that Sean's here, but I think I'm right, if it was sitting out in, off, off McCain somewhere.
So it's pretty much set, though, then that would be that dense of apartments? 150?
Yeah. Yes, it's going to look like three buildings. We've, we've seen, you know, the, the look that they're trying to go for. We have encouraged them, and will probably be able to encourage them heavily, to make it, you know, a red brick type, antique brick look, like we, we would want on the building that we're going to build up there in the 600 block. And I, I think they're, they were nodding their head last time we talked to them. They're, they're a little bit on hold, but they're waiting on the railroad, and, and we just, we did our phase two on it starting yesterday. They were up there drilling for the spur track, so that ball's, that ball's moving. So all the balls right now are up in the air.
So, so there's no city funds being used is, on any of this property in the development, then, probably, correct?
Well, correct, but not correct. There, we're going to extend Fifth Street and Sixth Street. Okay? So there it is, you can see Sixth Street right there. That'd be the responsibility of the city and/or the county. We've, we've talked to Judge Hyde about the possibility of the county helping us with those two streets, and we met with him this week, maybe.
At two blocks?
Yeah.
Or just two, I mean, two blocks from Fifth?
Yeah. It's an extension of Fifth Street over to Magnolia, and the extension of Sixth Street over to Magnolia. So those will be our responsibilities. You know, once, once Lawrence and Bob and, and I get a chance to really nail the cost down, then we'll be able to come back with a little bit better plan on who's going to do what. And, you know, part of the money that, that they're going to give us, my thought was to put on the plaza. But if I have to use it on the streets, then, you know, that'll put us in a hole on the plaza. So we're trying to figure out how to do that, and of course, if, if, if the- So, we're trying to figure out how to do that, and of course, if, if, if the county, and we're all county citizens, so if they come in and help us on the roads, then we can take all the money that Bob and Lawrence paid for their property and put it into the plaza. So, that's where I'm playing, playing a checker game, or a chess game with money right now, but we're, give me another two months, and I'll probably be able to tell you what's going where and how much it's going to cost. Okay? All right. With that, no more questions, comments? How about a motion? Yes, sir?
Mr. Aaron Winters, I've been there before.
Come to the, come to the...
Yeah. Charles, would you mind coming up to the microphone? People at home can hear what you're saying and what your questions are.
My name is Charles Pope, and I am into the Square in Fort Worth, and it is, it is quite beautiful and laid out very nicely. But if you would take in consideration, if you're looking for other options, Savannah, Georgia, has got a very beautiful layout, the way they lay out some of their squares, and I think it would fit a lot in here into the, the architecture and landscape and what we have. So, if you ever get a chance to look at some of their pictures that they might have downtown Savannah, it's about three blocks from the river, and they, they have their buildings, and they're, they walk down the street, the street's closed, and the shopping and the restaurants and that are right there, all within walking. It's about a three-block area, and it might be interesting.
Sure. I mean, I, you know, let's pull up, Mr. Billings is in the other room, and he's listening right now. Let's pull up some pictures of that plaza. I have, and I'm not exaggerating, I've looked at, I would say, five or six different books, and I've looked at squares and plazas literally all over the world. I've seen them from Spain to Italy to Russia to China, trying to get some sort of idea on where we wanted to go, so I'd love to look at one more. I promise I would. We're, we're going to figure this out, and we're going to do it right, too. Okay. Motion adjourned?
To move.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Couch?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Thank you all very much for your attention, and council for your attendance. We adjourn.